April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Please have a roll call.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
Here.
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 Good evening.
Here.
And Romansky.
Here. I'd like to recognize any visitors to tonight's board meeting. Anybody that's not on the agenda that would like to come forward. So you know one. We'll move right to two point one, which is recognition of state level competitors. I believe we have a few people here.
Come on up, John.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Romansky. John Jake here, Activities Director, and we do have some recognitions tonight. And to move things along, I'd like to first bring up our head wrestling coach, Mark Nye, to share a few words with you and share his state competitor athletes with you as well. So we got Coach Nye and Mr. Jones, and I believe they're all here, so I want to come up with them, guys, and they'll share a few words. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for having us here. And we've got a number of guys here that we'd like to introduce and recognize for their accomplishments on the wrestling season. Our wrestling season finished, our wrestling team finished twenty-four and five on the inter-conference champions, second in the section, fourth year in row second, but we're working on that. This year, we had seven state qualifiers. It's been the most in Chocopee history. And four place winners, which matches our best ever. But have them introduce themselves, and I'll start over there with Alex.
I'm Alex Crowe. I wrestle one thirteen.
And your parents?
Oh, my parents are Rob and Nancy.
I'm Alex Lloyd. I wrestle one twenty this year. My parents are Bill and Karen.
Hi, I'm Brent. I wrestle one oh six this year. And my parents are Jenny and Bryce.
Hi, I'm Owen Webster. I wrestle one fifty-two, and my parents are Pam and Damon.
I'm Tyson Lea, and I wrestle one thirty-two. My parents are Monty and Bart.
I'm Michael Wagner. I wrestle one seventy. My parents are Anne and Stephen.
I'm Alex Coleman. I wrestle one thirty-eight. My parents are Tom and Stephanie.
This is the best I've been here, don't you think? I'd like to mention a couple of the guys here that play state. Alex Crowe, wrestled at a hundred and thirteen pounds and placed sixth in the state tournament. So he's all-state wrestler. Next to him is Alex Lloyd. Alex Lloyd is an eighth grader, finished a season with one loss. Last year, he placed fifth, and this year, he placed third. Next to him is Chocopee's first-ever state champion, Brent Jones, finished the season undefeated by anybody forty-one and oh, forty-one and oh on the season, at a hundred and six pounds. Next to him is our second state champion.
Most recent.
A most recent state champion.
Teacher in sales.
And Owen Webster, sophomore, and I think a tough state tournament. And these other few guys participated. Two of them won matches, the other one got beat in his first round. I'm very proud of all of them. I want to thank the school board for the support and how long it must go down there and celebrate lots of partners. Thank you.
Absolutely. Outstanding.
The good news is we had championship champions, but the bad news is we've never had them before, so we only have one certificate. So you guys are going to have to wrestle more. So I believe these are in order. Alex.
Three Alex.
Yeah.
Crowe, Lloyd, John Floyd, Brent Jones, Owen Webster, Tyson Lea, Michael Wagner, and Alex Coleman. Congratulations, all of you. Thank you very much for representing our school so well. And I heard that Mr. Nye said that you were one of the most avid learners that he's ever had as a team, who always wanted to continue learning, how to be the best. And obviously, you guys succeeded at that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
There you go. As well as yourself, Larry.
All right, thank you. Our next group, we're going to move to our boys' basketball program. And to introduce and say a few words regarding the boys' basketball team. I don't think they're all here. The number of kids involved in spring activities and work and stuff as well, and we're very fortunate to have all the wrestlers here because they're all involved as well. But let's welcome up our head coach, Bruce Kuyat, and the team members that are here, please.
I think I've talked about this before at our banquet, and this is a group that excels beyond the basketball court. They were academic state champions, or academic sectional champions this year. We have two four-point-oh students on our team, and our team grade point was three-point-three-four. So I think that's something to really be proud of. And they've also been a team that has gone beyond just being basketball players. We've done a clinic for Special Olympics. We've gotten involved with coaches versus cancer and feed my starving children. And they're just tremendous to our little ball boys that come, the third graders that come and spend time with us at our games. So they're way beyond what they've done in basketball. And if we came, if any of you that followed us, we came with about that close to being in a state championship game, and we're looking forward to it because we had played Lakeville North in a three-point game earlier in the year. So we felt we came pretty close, and we knocked on the door, but we did something only eight teams get to do, and that's we won the last game of the year. So this is our third-place state championship team, and we've got a good representation here, but I'm going to have them introduce themselves to you.
I'm Michael Longman. See you here at five-ten, over.
I'm James Joyce, and I'm also senior.
I'm Evan Hagan, and I'm a junior.
Zach Ettrup, senior.
Jake Fires, senior.
Dominic Schlupper, senior.
This was a team that were very exciting to watch. We had eleven games this year that were decided by five points or less. So it's just, it's been a real pleasure for me, in my advanced age, to coach a team like this. They've been just nothing but a very pleasure and a great representation of our, of our school. So thank you for having us here. We really appreciate it.
I think I have, what, five minutes till we have to finish up with this office hand here for three minutes. I'm ready to go.
Mary James could talk forever.
I was just going to stand here and wait till the, till the five minutes was up, and then just thirty seconds before, kind of hand out the... You represented the district so well with the way you played, and I guess you were the favorite team of all the finalists there because of the way you played. You certainly outshined Hopkins in your demeanor, and we really appreciate what you guys did for the district. And I have certificates for Dominic Schlupper. Never heard that name in this district. Jake Myers. Zach Ettrup.
Got you.
Evan Hagan. James Joyce. And Michael, I'll let you say your name.
Thank you.
There we go.
All right, thank you. We have one more group, and our last young lady just, just entered here. So our most recent state competitors, they just finished off this past weekend at Wayne High School in the State Speech Competition. So to introduce them and say a few words about the season, I'd like to introduce our coaches, Rachel Livingston and Katie Tapp.
Hi, I'm Rachel, and this is Katie. And we are the coaches of the Chocopee Speech Team. These three young ladies were able to compete at the state tournament this past weekend. Our program has grown exponentially over the last few years, and we've been working very diligently to make sure that they achieve the excellence that is Chocopee. And one of the things we work really hard on is making sure that they're good competitors and good sportsmen. We always try to be as polite and courteous as possible at tournaments. So anyway, these three young ladies were very, are very accomplished. We have Vettora Tia. Want to say a little bit about your category?
I am in Great Speech, so we take a historic speech and analyze it. I'm Ayushi Jane, and my category is called Creative Expression, in which I basically just write my own piece.
I'm Bonia Vidju, and I'm a crows. It's kind of like drama, so you act out a play that you get. And we're lucky enough to know what they've ranked out of all of the students that compete in their category in the state. Bonia is seventh in the state in her category. Ayushi is tenth, and Vettora was thirteenth, and that's out of a couple hundred other competitors
It's nice to see such a nice girls. I remember when I was in high school and college, speech and debate was something I did. And of all the things I learned at that time, I think speech, being able to get up and speak in front of people, has helped me immensely. And all the friends I made and all the fun I had just made a very special experience for me. So congratulations and thank you for representing us at state and doing such a wonderful job. Ayushi? Vettora? As, as much as we would like to have everyone stay for our meeting, you're very welcome, you're welcome to leave now.
We'll just, we'll take a two-minute communication break.
And we'll take just a two-minute break here anyway.
We're going to take just a two-minute communication break.
Yep.
If you enjoy your meeting.
You know, as many as we're getting going to state tournaments, we might have to actually expand our board much for that reason.
What a problem to have.
Yeah, what a, what a tough problem.
What a problem to have.
Congratulations.
We're good. Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
How many people are left?
I got chairs.
We'll go, we're going to go to consideration of the agenda.
Yeah, to add.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to be kind of difficult to add something before we consider the agenda. So we'll go to item three, consideration of the agenda. And we have one addition at our desk.
Yep, we have one addition, two-point-two. We have the privilege of having Senator Eric Pratt here to do a very, just a brief legislative update, or any, maybe any kinds of Q and A we might want with, with Eric. And that's our only additional agenda item.
So is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Allowed.
Is there a second discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda stands approved. And we'll go back to two-point-two, and Senator Pratt?
As Senator Pratt comes up here, of all of the legislators I've had the privilege to work with, Senator Pratt has been by far the most consistent, the most concerned, the most, the person who's come to me the most for advice or counsel. And I've really appreciated you seeking input throughout the short time that I've been here and the short time I've known you. You've, you've done an outstanding job. The superintendents respect the work you do, and we really appreciate all the efforts you're putting in down or up in the Twin Cities. So thank you for, for being here.
Well, thank you, Superintendent, Madam Chair, and Board. It's, it's a privilege to be here. As many of you know, I served on a school board for many, many years as chairman and treasurer. And I think I, I have a very good understanding of the work that you do and, and the impact that you have in our children's lives. So thank you for your service to our kids. It's, as I was joking before, you guys actually get to see results. Sometimes it's a call. I don't feel that way. But we are, I am trying to work hard to represent all of our communities and all of our school districts to make sure that we can get the right, the right twist on, on legislation that's going to be helpful to all three of the school districts in my, in my Senate district, which are Car, Lake, Chocopee, and Jordan, as well as all three cities. So I just talked to Superintendent Thompson and said, gee, I'd like to come sit for a few minutes, and then he invited me to speak, and I went, oh, shoot. I better get ready for this. And a couple of things he talked about. We have a supplemental spending bill. We just passed the anti-bullying bill, also known as Safe and Support Schools. And then just another bill that, that may be of interest to you, the Health, Health Insurance Transparency Act, or the PEEP bill, as we like to call it. So just real quick on the supplemental spending, I can speak to the Senate bills more than I can the House bills. They're going into conference committee, but the Senate has proposed spending two-hundred-nine million dollars extra this year. The spending that would, would go forward then would add an extra seven-hundred-and-forty million to the budget ongoing. As far as the part on education, the Senate's proposed spending an extra forty-one million in, in twenty-fifteen, and then that would be an extra sixty-six million in ongoing spending out in the tails based on that. And it's being based on the current surplus of one-point-two billion. The Senate bill's heavily skewed to early childhood. Over, almost seventy percent or twenty-eight million dollars of the forty-one million that the Senate's proposed would go to early childhood. Sixteen million for school readiness and ECFE, and additional twelve million for early learning scholarships. Only about five million really going to K-12 education, and most of that is targeted to ELL. I do think ELL is important and needs some additional funding. My personal preference is that we would have given the board more autonomy and authority to, to adjust the spending as, as they saw needed. Another piece is a small number, a small amount going to covering reduced lunches to make those as a non-cost to, to poor and working families. And then a small amount, one-time funds for teacher evaluation for non-CUCL schools. Teacher evaluation has not been delayed. It was a key portion of, or a key provision in our waiver for No Child Left Behind, and so that will continue to be moving forward. Just as a, as a comparison, where the Senate proposed spending forty-one million dollars in twenty-fifteen, the House proposed seventy-five million dollars in additional spending, of which about seventy-five percent would be at the discretion of the board. So putting more of it on the formula than really targeting it. As far as safe schools, that bill passed, and a lot of changes went into it. Superintendent Thompson, I appreciate your input on that. I kept, tried to keep in close contact with all three of the superintendents, as well as superintendents throughout the state, to make sure that we got a bill that worked in, in all types of districts. I, I was a part of the negotiation team in the Senate to help get a number of changes as compared to the House version that passed last year. And so there were really some key, some key provisions that got added. We really did tighten up the definition on bullying in the Senate version, reinforced that we were trying to protect all kids. The original version would have put schools in the role and responsibility of tracking kids for cyberbullying twenty-four-seven. This now just says that you have to deal with it if it becomes a problem in our schools. There's stronger parental notification in the current Senate bill than the House bill, where there's a presumption that we would talk, we would notify the parents. There's fewer mandates on volunteer training, more local control on staff training and policy definition. We now have a right for the student to present a defense, so if they're, if they're accused of bullying in the past. In the previous version, there was no provision for the student to defend himself. Now we have that. There's also a penalty for false reporting, so if a student is falsely accuses another student, there's a penalty back on that student. And the Climate Center, which was one of the most controversial pieces of the legislation, was expected to go on in perpetuity. That'll be sunset after five years. Some of the provisions that, that can still concern me is there's new powers for the Commissioner of Education to oversee local school districts and how they implement bullying policy. And it sets it apart from any other policy, because, you know, really, the commissioner doesn't have a lot of direct oversight over school districts. But, but this is one where the language is, is kind of concerning in that she may be able to directly affect policies. We had wanted strong, I had wanted stronger parental notification, one that would more closely follow the Data Practices Act versus just a presumption. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get that. I also had an agreement on, to sunset the Climate Center after three years, and that was amended to five years on the floor. And so the concern there being is, is, you know, we could have the school's Climate Center and the School Climate Council, which is an unelected board, sunset after three years and reauthorize it if there was a need. This puts it out five years and potentially keeps it ongoing for a longer period of time. And then there's also a financial impact to some of our outstate schools. Really, a lot of the work that suburban schools have done around this issue has been absolutely outstanding. And Director Tucker and I met and talked about some of the good things that were happening in Chocopee. And so that was helpful as, as I was working on this bill with the authors. And then I had also co-authored another bill that was based off the North Dakota law. It has an A++ rating from Bullying Police, no financial impact to schools. That would be mandated by the state. It was supported by the Attorney General prior to this discussion. And, and one piece that I really liked about the, the bill that we proposed was it provided safe haven or immunity for staff that were acting in good faith and within policy. And the current bill is not. And then the last, the last update I wanted to give you guys just happened late last week was the Health Insurance Transparency Act, or we call it the PEEP bill. PEEP stands for Public Employees Insurance Program. And what this would do is, is require all districts to get a bid from PEEP every two years, unless it's agreed to go longer than that, for health insurance. So you have to rebid it every two years. And then it gives an extra three-hundred thousand dollars to PEEP to do these bids. Now, the concern I have with this is, is one, we're forcing a bid from a government entity when all indications show that every time PEEP has bid, or not every time, but most times PEEP bids, somebody else comes in with a lower bid or better services. The second piece is that it gives PEEP a little bit of a, they currently do these bids for free, so it doesn't seem like there should be an additional expenditure for them. Now Superintendent, I can't remember, are you self-insured?
No, not at this time.
So for some of the districts that are self-insured, there's also a requirement that self-insured go out and rebid their servicing. That was out of the Senate bill, but still in the House bill. And this is, this is a bill that was strongly opposed by MSBA. So those are kind of the key updates as related to education. If you have any, take any questions that you might have.
Senator Pratt, remind me, I'm not in-depth familiar with the Safe Schools Act, but as I recall reading one of the summaries that came from AMSD, it seemed like the school boards can enact a policy as long as it's in compliance with the majority of the model or, or in compliance with the model at the state level. In other words, we don't have to take what the state put and passed in law and just stick it in Chocopee. Is that right?
Exactly. And that was part of what I talked about as far as being, having more local control over the definition and policy of bullying, that you can, just like you do probably with MSB model policies.
Yes.
You take them, you modify them to meet your needs. You can do the same thing with the state policy, as long as it needs some key provisions.
Exactly. Okay, good. Thank you.
And that, you know, I thought that was a positive change.
Senator, when did you say the, the PEEP bill will be on the floor?
Well, the PEEP bill passed the Senate last week, passed the House earlier, so it's going to conference committee. And so there were a few good changes that came out of the Senate version, and so we'll have to see where that goes. Again, I think that's going to be, in my personal belief, it's going to be a burden on school districts and make it harder, especially if you're in a co-op, to get, because you're going to be going out so often, that you're not going to be able to take advantage of some of the long-term provisions. Now, there is, there is one, there is an out there, and as long as your largest bargaining unit agrees to extend a contract, then you can go out as far as four or five years.
That may be partly answered, but I'm guessing this must have been championed by Education Minnesota?
It was. Education Minnesota, at least from when I saw it, was, was the lead proponent.
But since it has that proviso that if your bargaining unit agrees not to go out, that, that's helpful.
Well, we, what we wanted to do is, we wanted to say it should go out four years and then negotiate down to two currently, so you have to go two unless you negotiate to four. And that was based on sixty percent of districts and co-ops have four- or five-year agreements in place.
So it's going to make it mandatory that you go out for, get a bid from PEEP every two years?
Unless, unless your local bargaining unit agrees to extend it, but yes. So you have to get three bids, at least one of them has to be from PEEP.
So if you have a bid out there that might give you better, more aggressive prices at the three-year bargaining to get your bargaining.
The difference is, the House bill says that the largest bargaining unit has to agree on which bidders are going to go forward. The Senate bill says you just need to consult. So it makes it a little better in choosing who the providers are.
Yeah. Senator, back to the safe schools. When's the implementation deadline, and when must the local school boards have the policy in place, the revised policy?
Let me just double-check here. I believe it, I believe it's, there are different, I forgot it here. There are different implementation dates, the model policy. The School Climate Center will, will go into effect July one. Model policy, I believe, is effective next school year.
Okay, so by, I would assume MSBA is going to come out with their, their version. They're probably on top of that now.
And I believe the policy is, is like an October deadline. So the, the State Department of Education will come out with their model policy, and then you'll have a couple of months to take a look at and modify it.
Right, sure. Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll just say thank you for your service and representing our community well at the state level. Well, thank you, guys. And, and, you know, what a treat to be here with the kids that have been doing activities. I was, when I was on the school board, I was a strong proponent of, of activities and not only hearing about their success in competition, but hearing their success in the classroom. So congratulations to you and, and your staff for doing a great job.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We'll move to item four, consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent? Is it tied? Any discussion?
I would like to, I will move four-point-one, point one, if we can.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We'll go to four-point-one.
Four-point-one, point one is retirements. And I just wanted to note that, that maybe it's just a big deal to me, but you have Neil Johnson on there, and Neil actually happened to be the last staff member in the school district that I actually ever saw in the school. He was a student teacher the year I was a sophomore, then actually started the school district years and years. But, so that means he served a little bit over thirty-five years with our district.
Dating him or dating you?
Jane bolt.
And he also, when the students wanted an AP calculus teacher, Neil stepped up and stayed one chapter ahead of him.
With that, I would make motion to approve four-point-one, point one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion will pass. We'll go to... Those opposed, the motion will pass. We'll go to item five, all business discussion items, and 5.1 is a community survey. Krista will be presenting.
Just pull this up here first. I've been working with, after the referendum, we heard a lot about people wanting to get some input, and I think that we want input from people about what happened on March 11. Worked pretty closely with Peter Leatherman, who's from Decision Resources, via the phone to come up with this post-referendum survey. It kind of goes through, you guys have seen it, that day, why you voted, why you didn't, if you voted in support or in opposition and why. So I think it's going to give us some pretty good idea about what had happened.
Krista, would you mind scrolling back up?
Sure.
One of the things, just for those folks at home, the box, number three, if you look at number three, or excuse me, number four, would you say a little bit about what that box could?
So they'll be able to fill that out if they were supportive of the referendum, why. And then above that, or below that, if they were opposed to the referendum and why.
And is that, is that like a sentence or two, or can they type?
They can type. They can type.
So they could, if they want to go at length, they can?
I made them as big as I could because I feel like if people want to talk, this is their opportunity to do it. So I didn't want to limit characters.
Okay.
This is the one, if you were opposed, tell us why. And if people want to talk again, there's that other response. If they heard from an organized group, when they made their decision about the referendum. Peter thought that that was something they've asked a lot in the last couple failed referendums that they've worked with. When people made the decision, because that can tell us a lot about what happened. Information, where you got your information. So things that we put out. They can also do the other box. And then identifying yourself, who are you in the community. And those are some other options.
And is the survey itself, can they do it anonymously if they'd like to?
Yes. It'll all, it'll be anonymous. Oh, that question?
No, the, the survey itself.
Yeah, it'll be anonymous, yes. And then we'll put it out a couple of ways. On our website, the Education Forward website, it'll be embedded in there. I'll promote it on our website, too, on the main page and the headlines. We'll also have it on Facebook and Twitter. Hoping that the paper will help us with that. And we'll also have hard copies available here at the district office, and I'll also distribute them to all the schools. So if people just want to walk into the office and fill it out on paper, they're more than welcome to do that.
If there's other suggestions on how we might get these out here, whether it's at Cub Foods, or, you know, wherever it's at, obviously, the goal is to get as high of a response rate as we can get to get feedback from folks. And if they want to simply even just come right in to Sarah or Kristal and fill it out while they wait, we can have them do that here, too. So if there are other ways that people can think of, certainly let us know. And we'll be looking at kicking this off in the next week.
Whenever, whenever you guys are comfortable.
One question, Krista. I'm assuming that anyone who chooses to fill this out electronically or live, they don't have to answer every question, if for whatever reason they don't?
The starred ones I have are the required ones. I can change if you guys.
I kind of wondered if that's what that was.
But they're only on electronic format. So if somebody came in, they could do however they can.
Yes, that's true as well, because I can't make them.
Well, and it makes me wonder, should we make those doing electronically either?
Do all of them.
Yeah. Not that all the information isn't good. I just didn't want to constrain somebody if they thought, I get the question 10, now I don't want to do it, because I didn't want to answer that.
Is part of it the autopsy part of it, that if you voted or if you didn't vote, this helps to identify if we're going to go forward with something?
Right. And it helps us learn about the voter, you know, filling it all out, which you guys understand.
Yep.
So I guess, I'm sorry. So I guess part of what I would want from the board is if you have those feelings either way, to either let us know now, or else you can shoot Kristal an email and let her know if, what your feelings are, if you, if you need a little time to process, process this. And what's the purpose? What are we, what are we going to do with it?
Well, hopefully, we'll bring them back to those Guiding Coalition and Action Teams and show them what the community has said to us about why they voted, why they, why they supported the referendum and why they opposed it, so that it can help us move forward as we start to look at what we're going to do.
What is the end date?
I don't know. You guys?
We haven't set that.
Okay.
I think it'd probably be a good question to ask Guiding Coalition and Action Team, you know, when, as we look at the timetable of moving forward, when would they want these types of results?
Yeah.
That'd be, that would be my thought, Mary.
Probably having it open for a while would be a good thing, too, so that people have time to fill it out.
There's a couple of things. My initial reaction would be, in the interest of keeping it as inclusive as possible, I guess I would probably eliminate the mandate and instead have a leading statement or paragraph that lets everybody know clearly, the more, you know, information you can provide, the better it's going to help us. I think that might be a little bit more flexible. I would also recommend just another location, like the library, probably the post office, and places where folks without kids might normally go.
Could pick up a copy and either send it in or bring it in.
That's a good idea.
Is this going to be, is this going to be the type of survey where when you fill it out, you'll see the results as it goes, or is it going to be closed and?
No, yeah, it'll be closed. There's a progress bar, but that's not going to happen.
Well, Senator, I guess I always have with online surveys is having a mechanism in place to ensure that only one person is being one survey.
Yeah. This'll, this'll track, to make sure that only one.
Is it one per email address?
One per, yeah.
Although, I guess someone could fill it out online and come into the school office. I don't know if we can ever police that entirely. It's probably not that big an issue to worry about, so.
Especially if we're doing hard copies.
But you often may have a family that has a spouse, yourself and an spouse. You may get two bits on that.
They might have different opinions, even. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? If you have any, Krista?
Yeah, let me know if you guys want anything changed or?
I think it'd probably be, even though this is a discussion item, could we, could we get approval for, for this? I'm going to ask that we change it to the board taking action on this, if, if that fits the scope of what the board's comfortable with. That way, that way, as a community, they know that it's been, you know, board sanctioned.
I can make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, I guess, I don't know, friendly amendment or what exactly you're moving, Matt, because I would, I would suggest align what Scott said, that we remove the mandate from the questions and leave it open-ended in all formats.
So take the required?
Yep.
Is that okay with the motion maker in the second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will pass. Thank you, Krista.
Thanks, Krista. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll go to item six, all business, business action items, Excellence in Facilities in Operation Guiding Change Document.
I think we could probably take these in a large grouping, and I'll share the responsibility, I think, with Reggie a bit as we, as we talk about Education Forward. Sarah, why don't, okay, so here, what I want to do is I want to take you through the Thursday Nights journey. As, as, as the school board knows, we've had, we've been really blessed to have a lot of people sign up for guiding chain, or for our Guiding Coalition and also the Action Teams. And so part of our responsibility tonight is to, I'm going to ask Reggie to maybe speak a little bit to selection of the, of the two, two memberships. And as he's thinking about that, I want to take you through Thursday Nights' agenda for what that would look like for our community. So if you take a look up here, this is in draft, by the way. We're looking at having the key objectives be orientation meeting for the district Guiding Coalition. So in other words, we'll talk about what are the roles, responsibilities that we have as a, as, as a community. What are the things that we're going to follow for, for those kinds of things? The Action Team will be assembled that night for our Excellence in Operations and Facilities. Technology and Academics will be represented by Nancy and JP, but their teams won't be meeting that night. That night will be focused on by the Operations Group, and it'll be focused on by the Guiding Coalition. C, develop the work sessions for the Guiding Coalition and the Excellence in Operations. In other words, we have monthly meetings for the Guiding Coalition. We have, every two weeks is where the Action Teams will meet. So for the Action Team of Operations and Facilities, they'll meet that night. Then they'll also meet in two weeks, and we have a schedule there that will roll out to you as well. And then we pull it all together back in the, in those monthly meetings. So we're going to talk about what those work sessions will look like. Our agenda for that evening, we'll have, we'll ask folks to check in at 5:45, get name tags, pick up materials and packets. I'll do a short introduction at 6 o'clock. 6:15, Dennis Cheesebrow and Teamworks is going to go through, again, as I mentioned, the purpose, the norms. You know, even though we have 150, 60-plus people, these are people who haven't necessarily worked together as a team before. And you have to set some norms and some guidelines on what that would look like. We'll take folks through the, the school board's three-year operational map and our strategic roadmap, because we have three years of goals already set up. And I think that sometimes when you have coalitions or you bring in consultant groups, and in this case, it's a whole lot of consultants, we have to make sure, too, as a board, that they, that the group understands where the board has kind of put some stakes in the ground, where, where there's flexibility, where there's openness, where are the, where are the things that we're really been focused on in the, in the past and going forward in the future? And then Education Forward Framework, I'll go over that as well. And then the Guiding Coalition role and responsibilities. Sometimes with, with teams and with groups, if you aren't really clear on what a group's role is, they may think they're making final decisions versus recommendations versus, are they in a consultive role? Are they, you know, what are the roles? And so we'll clearly spend the time talking that through. And then at 7 o'clock, Action Team Updates. JP will give a real short update, but the truth is, he's just starting, I think it's next Monday is his first group meeting. And so he'll talk about what will be happening. A reminder for the folks in the community that in the technology group, that's a high-end, kind of a techy thing. And I guess geek is a real positive word now. It wasn't when I was at school, but it is now. And there's a, we've got a bunch of folks from the district and a few outside parents or community members who, who will be on that Action Team. But full disclosure on the technology group, for the most part, they speak a different language, and they'll bring it to the Guiding Coalition, and everybody will hear that night the direction they're heading. Also, the board, because technology is also, when we do our E-rates and so forth, we already have a, a five-year plan, but the purpose of this Action Team is to review, to take, analyze it, to make recommendations, just like any other Action Team. But I wouldn't want folks to think that they would show up and an Action Team means you're going to be able to sign up for technology, because technology isn't in and of itself already an Action Team. If someone in the community just says, you know, I really, really want to be on that, JP is more than willing to find a spot in a role. So, so that would work its, its way out. But for the most part, that, when we talk Action Teams up here, the Action Team is, is focused on the folks who want to deal with operations and heavy on facilities. What are we doing with bricks and mortar? The other group, Nancy then will spend the rest of the time speaking to what I would call the most important piece of our district, and that is the academics. And inside the academics, what Nancy's group will, will give us a preview on is academics, a little bit of the arts, a little bit of the athletics, as it pertains to our curriculum and so forth. But we want to make sure that folks recognize that our academic group is made up of the academic experts. Nancy had a application process, and Nancy and her team went through and selected the folks that had the expertise background and so forth to make up that Action Team. But we also know, in the way that we've set up our framework, that we've got academics on the top, they will report into the Guiding Coalition. So folks will hear that. And let's face it, the Action Team can't do their due diligence unless they know what's the driving factor behind academics. So the dance we have to do is we have to make sure that academics reports out well to the Action Team for Operations and Facilities and does an outstanding job for Guiding Coalition, because we can't make good, good decisions unless we know what direction our academic team wants us to consider. So we'll spend time at 7 o'clock doing that. Then frankly, we're going to build in a little time in case people find out this isn't what they signed up for. That if they want to walk away, it'll be no hard feelings, or if it's just not their thing, they'll be able to take that opportunity during the break to just kind of sail away. And, and again, no hard feelings. Or, we had a heck of a time, we did, we, and Reggie will talk a little bit about appointing the groups, maybe there's someone or handful of people, whatever it looks like, that really would like to make a switch. And that would be between the appointed group, the Guiding Coalition, and the Action Team. And I think as a board, what we've, what we've said is that, in the spirit of openness and flexibility, we said that we would be open to that. So Dennis Cheesebrow will also look at the teams that were assembled. And during that break in there, there'll be an opportunity to talk to Reggie and, and Mary as our, kind of our executive committee, our Chair, Vice Chair, and just offer up to them that, you know, maybe for whatever reason they would like to switch. And, and we're, we're open to that. But as one could imagine, you can't have wholesale changes to defeat what we've done, because we really did a fine job, I believe, of, of making sure that we're well represented and cross-represented. So then, what's going to happen is, is all the folks that are on the Action Team who really want to get into the weeds, they want to get in and know the details behind all the district stuff, from football fields to art, to performing arts, to, you know, whatever. When it comes to bricks, mortar and design, that's what that Action Team's going to do. And it's going to be the heavy lifting. That's how I describe it. That's going to be heavy, heavy work with lots of details, lots of information, tons and tons of option. No options are eliminated. All options are on the table. The Guiding Coalition will separate, and that group will continue talking about their role with the three legs of the stool, and what it means to consult with the board. And then board members are there to listen to the group, because Dennis will also take us through some exercises in where we've been and where we want to go as a, as a listening group. And so that group, too, will do heavy lifting. But that heavy lifting is more mile-high to practical, whereas the Action Team is, get your hands dirty, you're right in the weeds. And we very much need both groups. Neither group is more important than the other. I would really want to stress that, because we can't do one without the other. You know, Guiding Coalition isn't guiding anyone if it isn't for the Action Teams and vice versa. When we split up, we have Dennis doing the Guiding Coalition, and then we have Scott McQueen, Pat Overham and Michael Hoheisel there. Again, there will be a ton of Q and A available. And then we'll pull back together at 8:45. Dennis will pull us back together for kind of a large group, key messages, takeaway, with the hopes that, and Dennis is good to get us done on time. I think that's been his, his thing, that people get cranky when they don't leave on time. So we'll get everyone out of there about nine. And then all of our board members will be, whenever we have a meeting of the Action Team or Guiding Coalition, we'll mark it as a quorum of the board may be present, because when the Action Teams are out there meeting, you know, part of our responsibility that we've seen or that we would probably like like to do as a board is either, like we did with referendum meetings, Matt would go to one, Scott would go to one, Sean would go to one. We could do that, or it's possible that we could just say, the academic group is meeting at, at six o'clock one evening and on the academic night, Nancy says to me, you know, "We're going to talk about that CAPS Academy trip. You know, the board might want to hear that." But then we'd be in a, in a different role. We'd, we'd be in a complete listening role. The, the idea would be is that we're not talking, we're doing all the listening. So that's something too that we'll talk about with Dennis and the guiding coalition that, that we really want to put the, put the people on these action teams in a comfortable place. They don't feel like we're going to step in and judge, we're going to let them work the process. Certainly, if they have questions, you know, we'd be there to answer questions. But for the most part, we're trying to be that, sitting in the peanut gallery a little bit and just letting the process take care of itself. So questions on the agenda or any of the comments that I made there? Okay, yeah, Sean?
I've had several people ask how and when they'll be notified.
Mm-hmm. And we have letters ready to go, should you approve these tonight, which I would assume you're going to do. We have the letters ready to go and we have emails ready to go. So first thing tomorrow morning, we would notify folks. Reggie, do you want to talk a little bit about the, kind of the process we use for selecting these memberships?
Sure. So I think as the board is aware of it, for the benefit of those here and anyone watching at home, the board's placed an emphasis and a, and a importance on hearing from the community. Any good board's going to want to do that. We've done that in the past with task force, different community involved, committees and that sort of thing. And clearly, coming out of the referendum, that's paramount, that we engage the community as much as we possibly can going forward. And so the method behind and the purpose behind the guiding coalition and the action team is to do just that. And I'll be the first to say, and not going to surprise my colleagues here, I was kind of concerned that given the size that we thought we might get turnout for this, that we wouldn't get that many people being interested, both because of the commitment and just I didn't know that there would be that level of interest. And I'm thrilled to say I was completely wrong. And we've had, is the number around 175?
Yeah, I think that's-
Individuals who have been nominated or have self-nominated themselves to participate on one of these two teams. And I think that's fantastic. It says that folks are clearly engaged and want to be a part of this process, which is what we want and what we need. So we had a number of individuals over the last few weeks either not be nominated or self-nominate for either or both teams. And then we went through a process to try to make those teams as, what's the word I should use, balanced as possible, as representative as possible. And we looked at a lot of different factors, not just where they're located in the city-
Right.
-which is a factor, but to the point that we knew, we wanted to have a mix of people who support and the people who oppose, as well as did they come from the business community? Were they perhaps in the district as a staff member? Were they parents, were they not parents? All those factors went into that mix. And certainly paramount in that is what the individual was either nominated for or what they self-nominated themselves for. We tried to take that into, into account as well. And so we've ended up with, I think, two proposed for the board to review and, and as Rod said, hopefully act on tonight, two lists, which creates the guiding coalition and creates the action team, the operations and facilities action team in particular, that does that, that engages the people who said, "I want to be a part of this", or perhaps someone said, "We think that this person should be a part of it", they'll have the chance to accept or decline. And, and then as Rod has outlined, to put their, put their time and effort into helping the community and consult with the board in terms of how we move forward. So it's been a very open process to let people say that they'd like to participate, say how they'd like to participate. And then we've tried to be as inclusive as we can, as well as balanced, as I, as I said before, as we can. And I think that's represented in the two lists that we're going to act on tonight. But I want to emphasize something Rod said, when we communicate that to people, starting tomorrow morning, people will have the chance to say yes or no.
Right.
And it's not like they have to do this. Obviously, if they were nominated by somebody else and didn't even realize they were nominated, which I suspect is not the case in most instances, but if that were to happen, they can say no. Or as Rod said, Thursday night, if they come and they see that I'm on the guiding coalition and, you know, "That's not quite what I wanted to be. I wanted to be more in the weeds, I want to get into the details", great, they can come and say, "Maybe I'd like to make a switch." So they're going to have that flexibility. But I think we've got a very good mix and again, a tremendous number of people, to their credit, who said they're willing to step up and put the time in because it's going to take some time, it's going to take some real effort on their part, the administration's part, the board's part. We've got a great involvement in the community. Yes, Matt?
Just one group you left out, that's part of the guiding coalition, that's students. I think we have-
Oh, yeah.
-a healthy number of current students who are going to be able to help shape their future and have that sense of stewardship for the subsequent-
And they're living it, day in, day out, so that's a great point.
Yep. Any comments?
Anything else?
Other comments on that part? Sean?
I just have one question. I don't know that I've heard or that many people have heard or understood, is there an end date? Or if, if, yeah, like if and when they sign up for the guiding coalition, are they on it for eternity?
Took that those part off.
Or do we know, sorry?
The only thing we've asked people to lock in is through October, is it ninth?
Okay.
But it depends how the work goes.
Right.
Because we, we did say in the, kind of that nomination process, can you commit to at least these nights? And, and for the most part, I, almost always, they committed that they would give us until then. And I can't see any reason, at least right now, that we wouldn't meet at least through October 9th regardless of the work, type of work we get accomplished. So that's the endpoint. It isn't to say that there isn't a request to continue meeting depending on the work, but that was the base, base of the, the requests that we asked of people.
That's what we asked people to sign up for.
Yes.
Through the-
For both teams.
We, what the action team will get is that they don't know about, is some additional meetings. We actually locked in some additional, additional meetings. So in their letter, one of the things we point out is, is these are the nights and then because the action team is doing a lot of the legwork, that we've added the other off those every-two-weeks meetings on there. That's why I say, for some, that might be a little more than they bargained for. For others who are really involved, that's just maybe a little energy, that extra energy they wanted, knowing that there's more meetings.
Any other questions?
Okay. Sarah, you want to pull up then the, I'm sorry, that was not very good wait time.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay.
Guiding coalition?
Guiding col- yeah. So guiding coalition membership, just in, that we're going to ask you to approve tonight, again, as was mentioned, there's a representation of every one of the, from teachers, admin, students, business, community, city government, parents, non-certs and alumni. There's every representation. There's representation from the heat map of, of where folks live. And there's also representation that we believe represents the diversity in our community as well. So we will ask for that, being the guiding coalition. And then if you pull up the excellence in operations facilities, same thing, three columns worth of, of folks there. Again, the same type of thing. We, we work hard to balance all of the involved people so that they're, that passionate involved people are on guiding and pass, passionate involved people are on excellence group. The, Sarah, would you pull up the next document too, just so I can give an overview? Yep. We've all seen this, this is what I reviewed, so we can go to the next one, Sarah. The next document's the, the strategic roadmap, that's the one that I talked about earlier. The board, administration, teachers' groups, we got together and we built on core values, we built on a vision for 2016 and our strategic directions. And you'll be seeing, those at home will be seeing our strategic directions, our monitoring reports coming up shortly. And all of these things have been for about 18 months worth of work. And it will be important that the, the consultative groups that are working with us kind of get a flavor for where we've been and where we hope to go. So that's this document. The next document is the school board. What I would say is, if you're a business owner, business owners get together and they set what's most important for their goals. These are the goals and objectives that are most strategic directions, most important to our school board. School board put these together through a, a series of meetings and a retreat. And again, the folks who are involved on Thursday night will get an idea of, in each column, it's, this is what we, the board will, will ask of the administration to accomplish in each given year. And those are in pencil, not ink, because some years we have to move and adjust based on priorities or things that happen. But it's, it's really important, our board evaluates their own performance based on how, how well we're able to accomplish these, these goals. The next document that will be in the packet is, Dennis will take us through, again, we've, our teacher group, our administrative group and our school board has been trained in the ELS or the Educational Leadership System. And that will talk about each person's role in our community from consultative to governance to management. And it's just, again, it's helping folks understand what's expected of them so that we don't get, get off on our expectations of, of each other. That's, we found that to be real helpful. It's not a lengthy, heavy philosophical conversation, it's just some real practical ways to help us how we're going to govern. And then lastly, we have what's called guiding change documents. I know it's hard to see out there, but they're also on the district's website after they're approved tonight. Actually, the school board has already approved, we have the technology approved, that was approved in the past, academics were approved in the past. And then I'm asking tonight that we approved in the guiding change document for our operations and facilities group, that this gives us the, the unacceptable means. In other words, if we as a board say there are, that we're going to be open-minded and flexible, we have to really make sure we continue to focus that way, but there might be some deal breakers. And so the purpose to a guiding change document is that we can, and most times, to be honest, the unacceptable means are either statutory or ethical or legal kinds of deal breakers. You know, it, it's not the kinds of things we won't consider a turf field or we won't consider whatever, it's just the rules of how we operate. But then on this guiding change document is the why on the left-hand side. For example, for the academic group, we know that there's an achievement gap and we judge it to be unacceptable. That's the why, we're not, we're not satisfied. If you go to the far-right column on academics, the what might be that we establish norms or we establish programming to eliminate the achievement gap at the same time raising the score for all, all students in the system or something along those lines. So we have the why, the unacceptable means, and then the results, the what. And we'll share that with everybody too. We'll have the academics, the technology and the excellence in operations and facilities for everybody that evening. And I think, Sarah, that's the last document, right? Any questions, comments or? There's, there's a lot of information here, but I, again, I just want to echo what Reggie said. You know, to have folks sign up to be a part of this is just a, a real gift and I, I don't think anyone up here takes that lightly. And the fact that we've got people that can animately disagree with each other during the politics of education, but yet can come together for kids in, in a community, I think that says a lot about the deep roots and the integrity of the Shakopee community. And I know there are, there are people that are, that are maybe a little bit nervous and anxious about Thursday night, maybe myself included. But I know at the end of Thursday night, things will feel a lot better. And there's a tremendous amount of hope when you have 175 people from this community signing up to do better for our kids and our community. And I do want to stress, by the way, community. We, we, this last week, I spoke at the chamber with Brad Tapke, our mayor, and it is quite clear that the, the commu-, the city is, is also ready to be open-minded, opening and flexible to working with the schools. Because I think there have been a lot of opportunities that if we had partnered together and brought proposals together, whether it's a senior center, a community center, whatever it could be, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit there that if we do this thing together and we do it right, I think it's going to be in the best interest of all students, but all people in our community as well. So I'm just really thankful, really excited, people are willing to give us a chance to steer the ship right and, and we will do that.
Would you like the motion to approve the guiding coalition membership as well as the guiding change documents?
Yes, and I would ask that you appoint the guiding coalition per what the board said they were going to do and then accept membership on the action team. And I see Chuck has a question.
Chuck?
Actually, I'm ready to make that motion with the understanding that if people find that that really isn't the role they want, there may be the ability to vote, but otherwise I'll, I'll make the motion to appoint the guiding coalition to accept the action team membership.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, is that just limited to the membership, not the changing, guiding's change document? We're going to treat that separate? Okay, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say, echo what Reggie said or what he said. Great turnout, I know a lot of people on this list, a lot of people are friends I haven't met yet. Looking forward to getting to know them and participating in a very passionate debate that is solution-driven and, and ready to move this change forward.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will pass.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we accept the guiding change document as presented.
Second, any discussion? Hearing, oh, go ahead. I heard you take a deep breath.
That was Mountain Dew talking.
Okay. Any other discussion besides Mountain Dew? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion will carry. Thank you, everybody, for all the work you did and for the people who volunteered for these committees, we really appreciate it. We'll move to item eight, which is new business action items in the 2014-15 preliminary capital expenditure budget. And Mike will present.
Short PowerPoint, I hope to keep it short. Well, Mr. Davis gave me his time to.
That's a rumor.
It has to be in writing.
That takes board motion.
Absence is forfeiting.
So talking about preliminary capital expenditure budget. What we'll talk about is the budget, the building fund position as of the end of March. Review detail of proposed 2014 projects and what we've come up with to date. Action item is to approve the preliminary budget and then we'll have a kindergarten addition update. Capital budget, I believe it was in your favor-
It's in, it's in the packet.
And in your packet. And this, this is my PowerPoint abilities, as limited as they are. So revenues, we're going to be in 2015, are going to be about 3.9 million. That's up from 2.7 and mainly that's the lease levy we're using for the kindergarten additions.
And, and Mike, just for clarity again, what budget or what budget area are we staying in right now?
This is the capital budget only currently. It's not the building fund, capital only, not general, not adding staff or any of that stuff. So you can kind of see some of our major, our copiers, our V space. Curriculum will remain about the same on the capital budget. Technology, we are adding a new initiative to include Infinitum Campus, the finance system. So we'll be moving from Lawson, talk to the county, they're, they're upgrading and we don't have enough internal support to continue with Lawson. So we're moving to Infinitum Campus, hopefully the internal support will, that's our student system. They also have a finance system- a finance system, which a number of their people have come from Lawson. So it feels like a good fit, and we'll be exploring it more. But pretty close to pulling the trigger on that one, and being on line with Infinite Campus for the finance system in about the January to March timeline. So, equipment, again, 700,000, leaving that about the same building level capital. We bump up a little bit. Activities and equipment for buildings and grounds, we bump up each of those. The equipment for buildings and grounds, we're going to need a new truck. We've lost a transmission on a, I think it's a 98 or something like that. We're just, we're going to need a new truck. So that's why that one's a little bit higher this year. Health and safety, this is 270. Again, this is preliminary budget. And we will have a couple of projects with Sweeney. They have some asbestos tile that will need to be abated. And some of the rooms that we're adding carpet, you're going to take the tile off before you add the carpet. And then also, the cafeteria here at Central has carpet on the cafeteria floor when we pull that. We'll probably pull up some asbestos tile as well. Asbestos tile is abatable, and as much we start breaking it up, it's not a hazard, but it is a hazard. So that's health and safety. So you can see that we're going from, to about 4,087,000. We'll spend down our fund balance, 177,000 to about 1,635. Or that's what I would propose. The construction fund, now this is Fund Six, what we're looking at is, again, we're at about 14,000 in cash currently.
Little bit more.
A little more.
More than 13,000.
14 million. Yes, 14 million. Sorry, yes, 14 million. Those economists give me every time.
And he's our numbers guy. He's our numbers guy.
Thank you for the correction. Anyway, we'll have some possible land purchases. You know, what, we've set aside some money for that. We've set up, we have some land for sale by Jackson.
Mike, could you just hang for just a minute? The possible land purchases, now this is another perfect example of action team guiding coalition work here. We've thrown out numerous examples of what we might need, but we're not going to predetermine what we need. We're going to set a budget that will allow for flexibility of whatever the options are that come out of it. But that's why you see a range, too, of low and high, because we don't know for sure when we do that, if it's now, or if it's later, and of course, cost increase. So we did a spread here of possibilities.
Right. And all the available board initiatives fall into that same category of, these things aren't done yet. You know, we're just, we're still exploring the possibilities. And this was just an administrative list that we've come up with, and some ranges of things that we have out there that, you know, we have a 10-year capital plan, that's 30 million. So deferred maintenance, that hasn't been done. So just, once again, just, these are the revenue side and the expenditure side for that. So you could see, we, in, I don't know if that got kind of cut off at the bottom, but it could be a plus 4 million, or it could be a minus 5 million, depending on what case and what choices are made. So the available board initiatives, I would suggest that we're going to do those, about 200,000 worth of projects. Even, it'll probably be less than that. I just want to have a little, something left over, just in case there's some things that come up over the summer that need to be done. Kindergarten FF and A, 500,000 to a million. We have been able to roll some of those furniture fixtures and equipment into the building projects, into the leased levy kindergarten. So that number's down a little bit, but we budgeted about 800,000 for that project, curriculum and equipment. And part of it's going to roll into the, into the leased levy. Technology, again, that's off of JP's plan on technology purchases. Security Phase Two, I'm saying, we don't know, again, what people want us to do. So I'm saying for the summer of 2015, we'd be working on those. They could move up, they could move back. It just all depends.
And again, Mike, those, we're talking about enhancements, making, instead of the analog, security cameras going to the high-def, digital, whatever, that kind of thing. But that, too, that's kind of that weeds work that we talked about with action teams and so forth, is we're looking for our community to say, what kind of an enhancement or investment do we want to make in these things? And it would be no surprise that when Mike lays these out, you can see, these are elements of the past referendum, too, which makes sense, that if those were our needs, now we have a chance to ask the community. Again, we're not assuming we're doing them. We're just putting a budget in there, should the groups find that as an option.
Right. Stadium initiatives, our track needs to be replaced. It needed to be replaced two years ago, and we put, you know, 50,000 in patches in it, and things like that. But it's still, inside corners are wearing out. And so, we need to do something with that quickly, or at some point. And again, okay, you fixed the track, now do you fix the, is it a turf field? Is it a grass field? Is, you know, we have lacrosse now. How do we get all those things? And again, that's why we have the action committee. And then, once again, deferred maintenance projects beyond 2014, last, at the election, we had, you know, 3 million in there for that. So, again, it could end up between 4 million positive and 4 million negative, just on what people decide.
So you're looking tonight, Mike, for, this is a preliminary approval, correct?
Right.
And when will you come back for formal approval?
Well, if we get the preliminary on the projects, June 10th. So we'll have two committee meetings in there. And again, the board initiatives can wait. I mean, probably the 10-year plan improvements, we would like to give some action on that.
Right. Well, one thing I would add, Mike, is that, I didn't, I don't think I said it before, but with the action team and the guiding coalition, the conceptual framework is that it's asking our community for help for the bricks and mortar. But what I didn't say is, is that if there are things in there that come out of it, that as consultative groups to the board, let's just say the track, or the track and, you know, the grass, or whatever it is, we do have some reserves, but we're looking for some of that feedback from the community to say, are these things that are so dire need, that we'd consider moving them up, and then not doing them on a referendum, for example? And what leverage does the city have if these are being used with the city and the booster programs and so forth? So that gives us a chance to engage the boosters, the community, the city, the parks and rec, those kinds of things. But I think it's responsible of us to put a, kind of a minimum and a maximum budget, because if no one else partners with us, but yet the community says, this is a need, we want that track, now we have to figure out, you know, we probably would need to have to figure out a way, because we aren't going to take track away from the kids, for example. So that's an example of why that's such a, I mean, a widespread of budget there.
The next slide just shows some of the small projects that I was suggesting in that 200-dollar capital. Some carpet at the West Junior High offices, East Junior High offices need some carpet replacement. The carpet tiles at the entrances at the high school need to be replaced, are pretty worn out after seven years. We need a condensation tank for our boiler at Central.
Otherwise, it won't work next fall.
So, we're trying to upgrade a little bit to a 30,000 tank, and hopefully that lasts longer than the five years the last one did. Again, remove carpet at VCT and cafeteria for where the little kids eat. Sunpath, we're behind on our locks. We're bringing that, that's the only system that has two keys. A teacher has to have two keys, one to get in their door, and one to get in into their section or their cluster. So we're trying to bring that up. And then the two lunch tables there, and the four lunch tables at Eagle Creek for the kindergarten additions, we needed space there as well.
So we'll seek preliminary approval of the budget.
Is there any questions?
I have a question. Mike, I've not thought this through. There may be reasons why we couldn't even do this, or should do it. You mentioned the truck, and needing a new truck. Historically, and could we, would we ever consider approaching Shakopee Shev, Apple Ford, and saying, are you interested in donating, you know, a stripped-down model? They could put donated by Apple Ford on it. It's got Shakopee Public Schools on it. But maybe they need a write-off, or they're looking for a write-off, or they're just community-minded. Have we ever considered that?
We, I believe when Brian and the high school needed a truck for the construction trades, we did get one from Apple Ford.
Okay. Well, it would seem to me that it's something we should explore or consider.
We will.
Worst thing I could say, no.
Because of 40,000, if he spends 40,000 on a truck, then he only, or if he spends 30,000 on a truck, he only has 10,000 for custodial equipment. So
Right.
There's incentive to do that, so.
So maybe what we'll do, too, is send out, let's send out to the board the policies as it pertains to the naming and advertising. So we'll send that out to the board, too, so you can look at that. Because if we do that advertising, which I think is a good idea, we just want to make sure we got our ducks in a row there. And so we'll get that out to you by the next school board meeting.
Anything else? If not, entertain a motion to approve the preliminary capital budget?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? A second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion will stand approved. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. And then I just did want to bring us up to date with the kindergarten additions. All the buildings, again, are under budget, so we're doing well there. We're looking at other scope things that fit in with the remodels. We'll move some equipment costs of the project, the smart boards, the projectors, the short throw projector, they use the smart board. Those things will be included in some of the costs now, maybe the tables and the chairs, those kinds of things. We'll move some of that into that budget. Again, we reviewed the 10-year plan to include some of the carpet replacement, some of the paint. We're fixing the storage at Sweeney to make that a little bit better. And it's all going to, we're watching the budget closely, and ICS will probably have a budget update for us at the next, either at the April 28th, or for sure by the May 12th, 14th, whatever date that is. All buildings are, for the construction process, we're receiving all the shop drawings, we're getting all the insurance, the warrants bonds, all those things are finally starting to roll in, sign contracts, those things, so that is coming together. Most of the fences got put in place at all the buildings. I saw last weekend, or last week, that most of the silt fencing is also in place at all the buildings. And they have started work today. They started work at Sweeney, and they started work at Sunpath. So there's a picture of the Sweeney looking from, that's looking from Lyons Park. And so that's, the hill is kind of going away. But the door will still have the hill, we'll have the hill back in place after, after the addition goes up, so that, we'll use that door as an exit. I continue to use that door as an exit. This is looking from the west, towards that same area. You can see the orange stake in front, that kind of gives us an idea of how far that's coming out. You can see the block has already been delivered on the left-hand side there. And then another shot, I'm trying to get the orange stakes in there a little bit, to kind of give you some idea. And then, again, there's some rebar down in front for your viewing player. Then we go to Sunpath. Sunpath is the only building where we had to take the fuel storage tank out, because it's right in the middle of the footing. So we need to move it closer to the boiler plant. And there's plenty of room for all that to happen, but we needed to remove that. And that's what a storage tank looks after since 1998 it was in the ground. So, looks pretty good. Fiberglass, there's a couple nicks in it that I'm hoping they can fix before they put it back in, because we're not, we didn't pay for an additional new tank. So they'll get that fixed before they reinstall that. Again, that kind of came out, you can see the basketball hoop, and then the tree, and then there's that orange stake, a stake with an orange top on it. That's about where the tank came out of. That's looking from the east back at the Sunpath cafeterias, those large windows there. And then finally, looking from the cafeteria, the excavated pit, you can see the fence around the playground. The fence is shortened, just in front of the ramp where they can use the playground, continue to use the playground equipment. You can see the silt fence behind the playground equipment. So it's been a little bit of a supervisory issue to keep the kids away from the silt fence, but the person will understand what's happening. So we have that same kind of situation over at Jackson. So they haven't started at Jackson, Red Oak, or Eagle Creek. I wasn't there. I didn't look today at Eagle Creek or Red Oak, so I don't know if they started there. But I didn't see any excavation going on at Jackson. So by any means, silt fence condition is the same at Jackson as it is at Sunpath. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Since there is no Assistant Superintendent update, we'll go right to the superintendent update.
Sarah, I think you had, you had called to my attention that there was one particular thing I needed to do.
Yeah, Shakopee celebrates reading.
Okay, so the, yeah, so the handout you have in front, the little slip of paper here, is the, a call out to, that Shakopee celebrates reading, sponsored by our Rotary Club, is April 22nd from 1:00 to 1:45. Our first graders from across the district, plus Saks and Living Hope students, will be in attendance. And if we're going to be in attendance, it has the
An email address, please. R. S. V. to Joel Lynch.
Joel Lynch. If we're going to be there, or your respective?
I believe you're going to be there.
It's at the high school, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Anything else, Rob?
No, I don't have anything else.
Committee updates? Any committees been meeting? Other than Carver Scott, no longer is in existence. We adjourned our last meeting because of all the business of selling buildings and making sure the contracts were up to date is done. So MRFSEC is still in existence until we figure out a couple other of the finances. I think it's going to be around for another two months, but Carver Scott is officially gone. Anything else from any other committees? If not, any other, anything you want to add, Matt?
Nope.
Sean? Scott?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in for a second, just kind of recap all the business that we approved for the Thursday night meeting. And just kind of say, I was just looking at all the documents. I mean, we've been going through this for, you know, a couple weeks now. We kind of knew what was going to happen. But for the folks at home, and the folks that have just been appointed, my, I just wanted to put out there that this is so much bigger than just a conversation about a high school that you're about to get involved in. You're going to get into a level of detail, and deal with business professionals, and be able to work with top-notch facilitators. And just the process in general, and the exposure that people are about to get themselves into, is something, I don't want to say it's something you'll ever do in your entire life, but I don't know of a time when, at least when I've been around there, this district will have had that much to offer a large group of people in such incredible detail. And I just really think it's, it's a testament to what this administration has been able to get put together quickly. But I also believe that the 170-some folks But I also believe that the 170-some folks that are going to have this opportunity, it really is an opportunity, you're going to see and hear and be a part of stuff that, I don't know, we've had task forces over the years, I'm sure many of them. I can't say that it's ever been to this level when you lay on the strategic planning and the road mapping. This is just a level of detail that I hope that you're proud to be a part of it. And I really think that it's going to be, I don't want to say life-changing experience, that's dramatic, but I really think it's going to be huge. And I'm really looking forward to seeing it play out and to see the feedback, you know, from the community members that are going to be able to be a part of it. And I think it's, I think quite frankly, it's going to exceed every expectation that the folks that have just been appointed probably are going to come in with. So I just wanted to say kudos to Lieutenant Thompson and the rest of the administration for, you know, all the hard work putting it together. And I look forward to seeing what's going to come out of it.
Chuck?
Yeah. I'm not terribly surprised that we got 175 people signing up. I mean, this is a school district that has always had people step up when asked. And, you know, just over last week, we recognized volunteers at three of our schools. And that was at the Jackson, and the cafeteria is full, represented, you know, a couple hundred people that had put in over, you know, about 4,000 hours of work. And some of those are parents, and you kind of expect parents are going to do that, maybe even grandparents. But there are members of just the community that have no other real ties to the school district, are there volunteering because they think it's the right thing to do. So this is a community that always steps up for theirs, so I'm proud to be a part of that community.
Angel?
Good, thanks.
Reggie? We'll go to upcoming meetings, important dates, and I don't think I'll go all the way to October. April 17th is our guiding coalition meeting from 6 to 9 in the Shakopee High School Commons. April 28th is our board learning session at 5:00 p.m. April, I mean, May 12th is a board business meeting at 6:00 p.m. And May 22nd is the second meeting of the guiding coalition at the Shakopee High School Commons from 6 to 9. Otherwise, now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, now adjourn.
This one might be a challenge for us, Sarah. There is a lot today.